Six years in county, no increase in the residential property tax. We're going to pass number seven in May. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees in the Village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, and it is approximately 7:05 PM. I will ask the clerk to please call the board.
Trustee Burke?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Perkins?
Here.
Trustee Rigby?
Here.
Trustee Shaller?
Here.
Trustee Thompson?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here, thank you. It gives me particular pleasure tonight on Agenda Item 4, given the audience, to ask everyone to please rise and say "Pleasure to meet you."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or my nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Quick matter of housekeeping on Agenda Item 4, approval of minutes from last month's Committee of the Hall and Regular Board of Trustees. Are there questions for the clerk or editor regarding the additions and changes? Okay, there being a chair would like a motion to approve block.
No move.
By Trustee Rigby.
Second.
Second, by Trustee Shaller. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair will ask unanimous consent that the record remain open for a period of five weeks for subsequent amendments that are necessary to correct any technical nature. Thank you for that objection, so. Agenda Item Number 5 is the President of the Board's. I implore you to yield, from my dear friend and colleague, Trustee Thompson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tom Gilder could have come over here, please.
I need that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. President, just want to say that Share Illinois Bicentennial, the 200, the Illinois 200 Bicentennial celebrates the things and places that were born, built, or grown in Illinois. The moments and people that tell the ongoing story of this amazing state. On 3 December 1818, Illinois officially became the 21st state in the Union. A key ingredient in celebrating Illinois' 200-year heritage is its veterans, who have played a significant role in building Illinois and our Union. So the Illinois 200 Bicentennial organizers selected 200 of the over 6,000 veterans to be part of the celebration. And Lake Barrington celebrates as one of our veterans met the special criteria required for this recognition. It is my high honor to present this Village of Lake Barrington proclamation in recognition of Thomas Green Gilder Jr., a U.S. Army and Vietnam veteran. Here is the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Bicentennial organizers and the Illinois Department of Veterans Affairs honored the work of 200 military veterans from across the state of Illinois in celebration of his 200th birthday. And whereas the veterans chosen to represent the Illinois Bicentennial Honor have contributed above and beyond the call of duty, as they dedicate their time and energy to assist their fellow veterans and service members. And whereas this award has very special meaning, as it provides our state, as well as the Governor of Illinois, with an opportunity to showcase the value of community service as exemplified by our Illinois veterans. And whereas Tom Gilder, President of the Veterans of Lake Barrington Shores, is honored as one of only 200 veterans across Illinois, who have gone above and beyond in serving their fellow veterans and their communities. And therefore, may be resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington, Lake County, Illinois, that the Village of Lake Barrington honors and recognizes Thomas Green Gilder Jr. for his service to veterans and the community.
Is it only, only one page?
Yeah. I'm more comfortable talking to everyone, so if I kind of swing around like you do.
My pleasure.
First, thank you, President Richardson, Village Trustees, veterans, and fellow residents of the village. I was honored to be nominated and chosen as one of the Honored 200 of Illinois in 2018. I am humbled by the proclamation tonight. Honestly, I don't see myself as someone special, not at all. I think of myself as one member of a wonderful team of like-minded residents that at one point in their life joined one branches, one of the branches of our armed forces and served honorably, and have chosen to continue to serve their community, their neighbors, by volunteering. What makes the Honored 200 reward in tonight's ceremony especially gratifying for me is that they both go a long way in validating the vision of the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores. Our unified purpose to support our fellow veterans and military in our community and county is quite gratifying, is exceeding our expectations, or everyone's expectations. I really don't have to explain to you about volunteering, being able to organize and perform as we do, within the nurturing governance provided by the boards of Lake Barrington Shores and the village fuels the will to do more, and we will. At this time, I really want to recognize my team of veterans and all of my friends here, because you make it worthwhile for me to get up in the morning and go out and do these things. I really, really enjoy it. It's a wonderful community. This is something which really should highlight to everyone. It's a beautiful community. Come to our community. Thank you all. Just to put note, the actual number of veterans in Illinois is 650,000.
I see six.
6,000.
Oh.
650,000. What made, I was saying to Karen before, what made the Honored 200 really speak to me and kind of hit me when I got down to the ceremony on December 3rd, was that there are the 650,000 veterans, and there are only 200 of us there. Also, 35,000 veterans live in Lake County, and of these 200, only eight were chosen. And again, it just sort of, just to stop and think about it, wow, I wasn't the lottery winner, but it was pretty dark.
Tom, as far as you screwed, I would love for everybody up here to have a chance to offer some comments as well. If you can get on my right with your fellow veteran and our colleague, Trustee Rigby.
What can I say? Tom went in the Army, got smart, joined yours instead of being a jar-laded little leatherneck. This young officer served in Vietnam, but his great service has been here with the veterans of LBS. It's by far the most active organization in this community, probably in most of the communities around here, so congratulations to you, Thomas. Well deserved.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Trustee Perkins?
Congratulations, and on this fantastic honor, and thank you for your service, and thank you for all that you do for our community.
There will be a lot more.
Mr. Gilder, sir.
Yes, sir.
Many, many years ago, I think I assisted you in moving into Lake Barrington Shores.
Sure did.
One of the best things that ever happened in the condo setting. Tom has also been on our condo board, still continues to be a member of our condo board, and has just done a fantastic job. As Trustee Rigby, General Rigby indicates, the veterans of LBS is the largest organization in Lake Barrington Shores, the most active, do the most things, and as well as get the village involved. And I want to thank you and all the members of the veterans for doing everything that you do, and congratulations specifically to you for this distinction.
I'm honored. Thank you.
Since our administrator is a former trustee and also a resident of the village, I'm happy to recognize her as well.
Thank you very much, President Richardson. I've gotten to know Tom a little bit, and Bill, and some of the other veterans over the past year and a half that I've been here as administrator, working with the barn stump and working out with Bill at the health club in the morning. And I just think this is a great honor, and I'm so proud of you and the veterans of LBS, and I'm really proud that you live in our town.
Thank you. I'll also recognize Councilman.
Tom, I guess I just sit here and I'm in awe of your service to your country, your state, and to your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Burke?
Equally in awe, never had the privilege of serving, but of old people like yourselves and those who have done in any and every capacity in the highest esteem, for you to take a leadership role in that is truly remarkable, and like so many others here, just proud that, proud that you're part of our community, and have been a really important part of this community for a number of years. So thank you for everything, and congratulations again.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Thompson, anything you'd like to add further?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to remind myself that it was 650,000 veterans in San Antonio. I apologize for that.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chair.
And Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you.
Tom, I'm just amazed and wowed by your service, that you continue to serve and volunteer, and since I saw your smiling face with one of the first presentations here about that, incredibly proud of you and appreciate all you've done, and you really look good for 200.
Thank you. I'll take that home.
I'll also recognize the clerk, as she is a Lake Barrington resident as well.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the community. It's good to know you.
Thank you, Lisa. And I get to back clean up. I got to know Tom about 10 years ago, and was happy to help raise some money for the early events, and they became so wildly popular that people now really look forward and clamor to be a part of them, and I congratulate you for your leadership in that. You know, you were kind enough to say, "Early overall volunteers," but the reality is you have a lifetime of service, and there are two passages in the New Testament that I always think of, one is the parallel of talents. And you have more than given back what was given to you, and St. Luke reminds us of 12:48, "Too much has been given, much is expected in return." I think you could sleep soundly at night, and you've honored your country as well as the teachings that come from the Most High, and I admire you greatly for that. I'm going to do something unusual by way of process, because we actually have not voted on this resolution until now. I'm going to direct that the motion be offered by Trustee Thompson and seconded by Trustee Rigby, and I will ask the clerk to please call and roll the court then.
Thank you, Mr. President. I still move. Second.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Shaller?
Definitely.
President Richardson?
Yes. Again, Tom, God bless you and many thanks. Chair is also happy to recognize anybody from the community who would like to say something at this time. We're always happy to host, and at night, we thank you all for coming out. When you get stressful one night and you can't fall asleep, our readings are available online, and typically, that seems to cure Mrs. Richardson's insomnia, so I commend her with some firsthand experience. And always in person here, if you can find a seat. That's right. Thank you all, and Tom, the welcome as always, after you and your colleagues and the veterans, yes, sir. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming. Can you imagine to stay for the entire reading?
Yeah. It is the largest turnout of Lake Barrington Shores I've seen at this village board meeting, once in a while. You come out, man? See you Thursday.
Happy to now get to know Dr. Michael for this one. We can move to Agenda Item 4. There was a simple proclamation in practice, I worked with the committee several years ago, and I don't, I don't motion to read it necessarily. But I would just ask you, does anyone have objection to this going forward? Then Chair, Flashman Adams consent, the proclamation was correct and considered as ready, without objection passed. Agenda Item 5, see as the economic development report. And we'd happy to yield to Trustee Burke.
Yeah, great, thank you, President Richardson, as the crowd claps out. As you know, as the board up here knows, we had some extensive discussion about the status of our economic development effort up until this point in time, and we have a very deep dive into that today. As a precursor to asking Ms. Scott from Scott Partners to come up and talk to us about the role that she's played with us over the past six months, and the role that she intends to play for us in the coming months if we were to extend her contract. So I would invite Ms. Scott to come to the podium, while I just say I'm very pleased with the progress that we made as a team and as a village, and our journey is not complete, but we're making great progress, and we continue to do so. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Scott to introduce herself and give us an overview of what she's been working on the past six months and what she intends to help us focus on going forward. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Trustee Burke. I'm Kathleen Scott with Scott Partners. Thank you for having me here, President Richardson, trustees. It's, the past six months have been a fun and interesting learning experience, learning more about this village, and how we can positively impact economic development here. And I've had a wonderful committee to work with, it's small, but wonderful committee to work with, and it's been Trustee Burke and Village Administrator Karen Dalton-Lang. And we have, for a small little group, we have accomplished quite a bit, and well, two of it. We drafted, developed, and adopted the village's first ever economic development plan, sort of a guideline for us to follow in order to bring about the results that you hired me for. And we created an economic development plan timeline. Do you have the phone in the, oh, please? Thank you. So we wanted to make sure that we always stayed on task, and that we were efficient, and that we were accountable. So we put together this timeline, and there's been times we haven't adjusted, but we've been true to it, and we followed it, and we've made, as you can see by looking at it, we've made a great deal of progress. We started out, we identified potential businesses that would enhance the village's current businesses, as well as meet the needs of the residents. Number one, of course, came across as being a small grocery store, like a Fresh Market, or Small Trader Joe's, or a Foodstuffs, or any of the small footprint, 10,000 or so square foot type grocery stores. And we're not there yet. We know what we're looking for, but we also learned the route to get there. So additionally, one of the other things that it appeared that people did not want to see in the village are big chain stores. And I think that's a no brainer, because this isn't that type of village. They wanted mom-and-pop stores where they would go in and know the owner, know the people, and it would fit within the village. So we researched, evaluated, discussed a multitude of economic development incentives that we could put in our arsenal for targeting the businesses that we found, that we learned would accentuate the village. So the results were pretty eye-opening. The incentives are not a one-size-fits-all proposition that you might think. In fact, incentives are very specific to each developer and each development. So we've determined that a multitude of incentive programs available for use at our fingertips, but not necessarily already implemented, would be our best bet. That would include the use of retail sales tax rebates, matching grants, district districts, and other things along those lines that we would use as incentive. So when entering into discussions with prospective business owners and potential developers, we can determine what type of support they're looking for, and then we would have it available for us to use if that's what the village decided to do. To that end, we joined the ICSC, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers. Trustee Andy Burke and I attended the annual trade show in Chicago. We engaged in conversations with various attendees on all sides, developers, landowners, and municipalities, and we also learned a lot there. We learned that the process of bringing new business to the village is not quite as straightforward as we thought. And so there are specific channels we need to follow, and we can't circumvent them, or we're not going to be able to reach out and work with the businesses we hope to work with. So we learned that we need to work with developers, learn to receive consideration from the actual businesses, you don't just walk up to a Starbucks and say, "Hey, you should come to Lake Barrington, we're great." And so now that we're knowing the ropes a little better, we know the way to get to the end result. We, in a more tactical term, we reviewed and implemented the processes, redesigned forms, and worked with staff to streamline business licensing and permitting functions. Still more to do, but we're off to a great start, and I just want to thank Karen and Lisa, because they worked with me and carried so much of the burden, and I think between the three of us, we were able to really come to a streamline on this, and lose some of the burdensome analogies of yesteryear. And so also, one of the implementation, one of the items we implemented was an online payment processing, which I know Karen had been working on previously, and now we are fully immersed in that. Anyone can pay their licensing fees and things online. And also, thanks to Lisa's artistic efforts, the village newsletter has been given a makeover with a fresh new format. Many thanks to Lisa for taking lead on that. You're wonderful. And one of the things I find most exciting, and I kept it for last, because I can't wait to meet her next one, is in order to consider what sharp young minds of the future are thinking, Karen reached out to University of Illinois at Chicago with amazing results. A group of bright, energetic students are developing a follow-up to the 2012 pepper road market study that the village had commissioned, and it's being done as their capstone project. So we're getting the best and the brightest to take a look and see what they envision. And so they will be presenting the results of their efforts at the May board meeting. And, oh, I do have one more thing. Those are the things we've done, and the things that we're looking forward to and to work on in the next steps of this process. I think the biggest, most important one is a database. And I know in other past projects, people will say to me, "Well, I didn't read the spreadsheet. What's the difference?" Well, it's, there's a big difference, and I could go into it long-winded, and I don't need to, because I found an amazing, short, sourced little document. It's great, and it's brief and to the point, and it explains why we need the database for our businesses to mainstream our processes.
Thank you very much.
While you asked this out, Ms. Scott, I'd just like to say thank you for bringing this, because we've been talking about putting together a database for a while now, and we need assistance in-house to do this. And right now, we have lots of information, but it's kind of scattered, and it's in different spreadsheets, in different formats, and everything else. So by being able to create a database to know what we've got out there, I think it's an important step in both keeping track of our businesses, whether it be registrations, or permitting, or whatever, but also for reaching out to them. Totally. It doesn't sound. It's a lot easier to sort data, to make changes. I'm sure Lisa can agree that you don't have to scroll through pages and pages of rows and rows and columns and columns like you do a spreadsheet. And so we, we've actually, in keeping with local sourcing, we reached out to the chamber for a local person that works on databases. So Sudan Khor did give me a name, and I will share that with the chamber tomorrow, and we can see, get a quote or a bid from them. And I think that's, that will allow everyone that has a business here to go online and click through the fields, thereby approving the information or providing that everything there is correct. They'll click through the fields, they don't have to re-enter. Lisa doesn't have to re-enter it every year. And we're also working on business licenses used to change numbers by the year. And I was really surprised about that when I learned it, and I think it creates an unwieldy filing system. So what the numbers people get this year, we're going to try to keep those in place, and then those businesses will have those numbers forever for filing and maintaining information. I think that'd be, that's a streamlined that system. And the other larger item that Trustee Burke and I are working on is what our initial message will be when I start by May, I believe, Trustee Burke, by May, we're going to start the visits. So we want to, we want to make sure that we have our message fine-tuned. You know, this is the first impression businesses are going to get of the village outside of working to get the business licenses. So I'll be going, and actually, I think we've decided we'll take a photo, a nice photo of the person with the business, just to, so that when, if we decide to go with the business of the month, we'll have photos all the time, and we can just feature businesses. So this, that's sort of it in a nutshell. There are a lot of smaller pieces. I don't know if I'm going to go into every single one of them. They're on your list, but I'd be happy to, if anyone has any questions or would like to elaborate. I'm going to talk about the green bars. Oh, the green bar, yes. The, on the far left column, and this is a spreadsheet, is a, you'll see where green bars are, and then followed by a light green shading, and those are items that are completed. There are two that have a little bit of a speckle and a paler green bar. Those are in the process. They have been partially completed. And then if you look further along to the right, you'll see, like, what we're working on currently is all these assisting businesses, seeking expansion, encouraging staff development, and continuing to put together and implement the fast-track permit processing. And we're just getting ready, as I mentioned, to start up business visits and determining what our message is. And then lower down, green, and these are color-coded by goals, so goal one is blue, goal two is red, goal two is green. And towards the bottom, it's something that I know Karen does all the time. I give quite a few messages and information, and Trustee Burke as well, is just staying in contact with the business owners, with their commercial brokers, with people interested in bringing a business to Lake Barrington, people looking to expand. Just being an answering system for you, someone they can talk to, someone that if we don't know, we'll find out. And that's, providing that service, I think, is something that will help further the whole economic development goal.
Thank you. What I would do is, I think some questions were being asked in our session earlier, so I would encourage at this moment in time, if we'll start, if we have a question, let us start on the left-hand side here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, Trustee.
This is wonderful. This is very helpful, to sort of see the long-range plans. This is wonderful, this is very helpful, to sort of see the long-range plans, and can chart or modify can chart here to figure out. It's kind of, I haven't seen one of these in years since grad school, but I love them. I'm, I'm delighted with the progress, and I think it is, it's one of those things that comes in little small, small bits, but the progress is made by the combination of all of those. And, that's what I think you all have done a great job putting together. Good shape, this, this is really helpful, to any point, I want to know what you're focused on, what you're working on, for you, and, thank you. That's all. Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, well done. This very, very, very small group has been doing a wonderful job up to date, and it's one, maybe it could only be two of you. And, uh, my question is regarding the, uh, the, the website. I see the website link, I'm just going to call off these numbers, just, I have a question. Website link to database with public access, updating village handouts on website, and encouraging Lake Barrington businesses to link to database and website. So, um, those all show to be July, maybe even July, I think, roughly. It's a little small for my tired age. And, why some of these, um, just seem like things that we've been talking about, but really haven't accomplished much with?
Well, I think honestly, the biggest thing was creating the economic development plan. You know, like you said, we've been talking about it, and that'd be a great idea, we should look into that, that should happen. And, there wasn't a, a strategic plan, an overview, and say, "This is how we're going to get there, step one, step two, step three." And, I think that's why the Trustee Burke and I first started working, we, we need, he said, "We need a plan." You know, and that's exactly what we did, is we, we went through all those grocery list items, laundry list items, that have been floating and haven't been accomplished fully because there was no plan. And, um, and some things we found out we didn't need to do in the way we thought, like the incentives. You know, all along, we kept saying, "Well, we need to look over the incentives, we need to strategize, we need to have incentives." And, we found out that coming up ahead of time and saying, "These are our incentives," was not the way it works, you know, in the, in the real world. And, so, I think the knowledge we gained by realizing that, you know, we were kind of chasing our tail with some of that, and now that we actually went and learned how it's done, and we were very lucky, a lady who is a developer broker person, she took us under her wing, under her wing in public service, and sat us down, and, and literally spent probably at least half an hour doing a huge busy conference to, to tell us how the world works, you know, for a small village, and what we really need to do, and how it works, and that you don't just call Starbucks, you know? And, I think that opened our eyes to it, and that helped us to form what our, our plan moving ahead is. But, giving us the, the economic development plan gave us that opportunity, and anyone who's ever done it, to do this, how good it feels when you accomplish one thing, and you get to move forward to the next. And, I think that's where we are now, and moving forward in the next six months would be that the database is crucial at this point, because everything feeds off of that. And, that's when we can use that database for, for anything, for staying in contact with the businesses, for, for reaching out to them, for helping them, and I think that that's, and, and like, uh, Trustee Thompson said, for people interested in the village to be able to search. We don't have a search mechanism, I mean, I think right now, we have a list, alphabetical list of businesses on our website, and that's better than not having a list, but it's not searchable. And, everyone might yell, "You want to go to the coffee shop? What's the nearest one, and who likes it?" Everybody wants instantaneous gratification, and that's, hopefully, what we can get them. Um, I, I mean, as far as, we did, we did accomplish full things, like attending those conferences, and, and going on a quest to learn more, and now we've come back from them, and we're working on putting our knowledge into place. And, we did, a lot of it was, you know, you have to build a foundation before you build a house. The foundation isn't big and flashy, and nobody sees it, and says, "Look what you've done." And, I think that's what we've done so far, and, and that includes streamlining permitting processing, streamlining, um, business licensing and renewals. It's, it hasn't been the pretty showy stuff, so hopefully, the next six months will be the pretty showy stuff, so that it's, um, it, it's more outstanding, but without doing these foundation pieces first, we couldn't do the rest.
If there's one objective in the next six months that you hope to come back to us in six months and say, "We accomplished," other than the database, what would that be?
I would like to be able to say that we have formed relationships with developers. Um, I think that's a very strategic move, whether they have someone in their back pocket right now, and they say, "Hey, I've got this Caputo's Express, I'm going to put a rate on this empty lot for you." Or whether we become on their radar. So, then when someone says, I mean, similar to Speedway, they wanted to be on one of those slurs. And, we have one of the most beautiful Speedway stations in the country.
The most beautiful.
The most, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. The most beautiful.
Yeah, thank you.
And, um, I was never gay, so. Um, and so, I would say, yes, getting, getting, beginning to form, or forming, having formed relationships with developers, so that they're on the radar, so when they have a Speedway or a small grocery or something that wants to be in place like ours, the, we've fit the demographics, they think of us, they're like, "Oh, yeah, Andy, Kathleen, yeah, let's get them on." Let's see what Lake Barrington has." That would be my goal, that would be, I think, the most beneficial, because we would be able to target and get the businesses that we know would enhance our, our way of life.
Hold your compliment.
All right.
Uh, Trustee Perkins.
Um, yes, um, thank you very much for all that you've done. It looks like you've, I, I, I don't think you'd really mind to show you, you've been busy, you've been busy. Um, and, you know, with a, a village, um, a smaller village like this, and where we're located, and what we're all about, um, it's, it's going to be different than if you were to, say, you know, go to one of the, uh, the, or the Fox River Road, or, uh, you know, uh, so, we're kind of in the middle, and we're kind of the one that's just kind of way back, you know? So, it's going, it's going to have a different, different dynamics. Um, but I think, um, once you guys start visiting the stores, visiting the, the different businesses, and just finding out what, I think you're going to, you're going to be checking things, more things off this list, not totally, but you'll be checking it off for that business, you know, so you're going to, you know, you guys, you've done a lot already, but you've got a lot, you know, moving forward to do, to visit all of, all of these businesses. Um, but, um, I think once, uh, once you do get out there and start talking, or visiting with Andy, you know, with businesses, I think it's really time to check a lot of these different issues off.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Trustee Rippey.
Thank you. Uh, this is a good rundown, it's a good plan, and I'm glad to see it's, uh, Penceman put the paper on it, and I look forward, as John said, to, to your next report of what we've, uh, we've done, the partnership, or what we need to do, continue in March. Thank you.
I, I always bad clean up on these things, but let me commend you. I live my life this way. So, this appeals to me instinctively because it, uh, it does go to accountability, as John showed, and I appreciate it. What gets measured gets done. And, and I appreciate your openness to, to being, uh, and compliment that way. And, no, that's something Andy said. And, it actually goes to what Tom Gilder was saying earlier, you know, we're, part of the reason is, we've had a real good strategic sense for quite a while of where we needed to go. We have not resourced this activity effectively until a rendition. Uh, and, I think the most, the rotting danger field of business is tactics. Everybody says, "Oh, I'm strategic." Well, strategy, if it's brilliant, doesn't mean spit in the river if it's not implemented. And, and tactics, there, you know, Thomas Edison said, "Opportunity is often disguised because it shows up in overalls and looks like hard work." And, so, this is hard work, and the tedious, nitpicking little things that drive a business, uh, uh, and, just like the burdens, making them more user-friendly. Because when people tell their stories to their, to others who are their peers who own businesses, they will remember those little things. You know, "It was great, I went online, I dealt it out, boom, boom, boom." I mean, my big thing here, and Karen and I have a running conversation about it, I hate those automatic attendance that we have, and everybody else has, I hate those things. My mother taught me never to hate people, but I can hate things. And, I can't stand it because it's a pain in the neck to get a hold of them. I know why we have it. Uh, but it just, it drives me crazy. And, so, when you take the time to, to detail granular steps for action, it tells me you're serious about this. Uh, and so, I, I just want to say, I, I appreciate it, and I agree, there is a big difference between a database and a spreadsheet. Another way I would define, and I thought the, the one page we had was, was really helpful, is databases, I use to give me insight. Databases can be akin to accomplice, they help in point direction. Data is irrelevant if it's in analog form that is on paper, and it's not even relevant in digital form until it is, it is connected, until it's mobile, and, until you can use analytics to get the messages from it. So, I'm, I'm very happy with you on the right track here. John makes a fair point that I think we all share, but you've never struck me as someone who was able to be held accountable, and that's another great quality you bring to the dance. So, I, I'm very grateful, I like this, uh, for hearing more reports, and, you know, better you work with Andy than the rest of us.
Well, thanks for the great insight. I'll bad clean up on this. Um, here's my, here's kind of my summary, you know, we had a, a good discussion earlier that you weren't part of, Captain, but a big part of it is that you, you referenced learning, and I said, "There's a lot of foundational learning." And, um, you know, in business, we used to say, you know, "A little time to learn and educate yourself before you charge off and take the hill." General Rippey could appreciate this, but, you know, I always used to like to tell the story of the guy who plans the play at the top of the hill, proudly telling, you know, his captain or whomever, "We took the hill," and the guy says, "But that's not the hill I wanted you to take," right? And, so, there's no reason to take the hill if, if there's not a, you know, you can be proud of the fact that you got to the top, but it's not what you were trying to do. We knew we had a lot of hits and starts, and I appreciate how you characterize that. If you recall, when we re-upped on this and said, "We would create a plan, we would create a timeline, we would hold ourselves accountable," that's the difference, John. Um, we were being opportunistic, and we were doing a lot of hits and misses, and it wasn't very, we recognized it wasn't effective. This board recognized it wasn't effective, and this board said, "What we're doing isn't working." And, that's when we said, "Okay, fair enough, we're going to do this a different way." And, we re-engaged with Scott Carter, and said, "We're going to build this plan a different way." This is evidence of a plan, but I, I, it is important that, and what I'm kind of hearing too, and I totally agree with this, is that, that we have to begin, what needs to be a, come, begin to come into focus for everybody here is, well, what if we do all this stuff? Because it's not enough to say, "We checked all the boxes and everything is green," if at the end it doesn't do a damn thing. So, part of the accountability, though, is also making sure that we're constantly evaluating that the sum of these parts will yield the results that we're looking for. And, that's the other piece of accountability that we need to keep going back, and we do. And, we've made adjustments, where we said, "There's no reason to go do that." We simply said, "We're not going to go do Mid-American Econ Development Council right now, it just, even though it was in our plan, we investigated, it's not a good use of time and money." And, that's part of the plan, it has to stay, it has to stay flexible, right? So, the accountability is not checking the boxes on this, and even though this is pretty, but the accountability, and that's why I went on a really long-winded piece that you were spared, um, to say, we're still, that's still coming into focus, but we're getting smarter every day, and we know now we're going to spend our time and our energy more so. When you talk about developers, you're spot on. When it comes to finding, we talked about using a series of base hits, not home runs. Finding the right, because, and we have limited places where we can go hit home runs. So, we're backing off of that, and the same with base hits. And, um, and so, the developer piece, we're getting really close to being smarter to know how to go engage and have those conversations, and actively start looking for base hits, and maybe doubles, triples, and home runs with the right set of developers. Um, so, I appreciate those comments. So, uh, I was the one who said that we would build accountability, and, uh, Scott Carter's is my responsibility, not the other way around. So, the accountability is with me, and, um, but interesting enough, as I've also said, Ms. Scott has kept us on track because she has been really driven by this in keeping us meeting with regulatory, keeping us on our toes in terms of delivering this, which is what, what we asked her to do because Karen and I get distracted along the way. Uh, so, we appreciate that. So, um, thanks for coming in and spending time, and giving us the update, which we appreciate. Proof's in the pudding. I think we need more time to get this plan done, I think we need your help to get this plan done, that's what I'm advocating for. Um, that's what I, that's what I hope the world will come to see and understand.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Andy, thanks for, uh, now our work with Karen, you as well, I mean, this is, this is very important. Appreciate you being able to drill the down to, to, you know. Okay, Agenda Item Six is the first opportunity agenda for the public to address the board on non-agenda items. I see no one seeking wear and condition, although I'll always wave to officers to anchor it in the back. I love us here tonight. And, since Chris got the big promotion, we may not see him very much.
No, it's great, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, the, uh, the next agenda item then is number seven, which is the consent agenda. We all know how this works. Agenda Items A through 7D have been discussed previously and reviewed. I will ask the clerk to give me the ordinance and resolution numbers now, so I can fill them in for 7B.
Three.
Number eight. And, how about for 7C?
Eight.
Eight. Thank you. And, uh, D would be?
Nine.
Nine. Marvelous, thank you, okay then. Let's catch on. Uh, Chair would like a motion to approve by omnibus vote. The items listed on the consent agenda, as, as we have discussed before, Illinois law prohibits, or permits, rather, excuse me, permits municipalities to adopt by one single unanimous rule call of the board trustees and the village resident. A group who designated or admits this orders, resolutions, or motions placed together for funding purposes in a single court. All these matters are considered to be routine, and there won't be any further discussion of them. If discussion is desired, the item will be... Chair would therefore like a motion to approve in law Agenda Items A through 7D in pursuit to the consent agenda. May I have the... So moved. Second. Moved by Shalor, seconded by, uh, Mitchell, thank you both gentlemen, and I'll ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Trustee Shalor.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, ma'am, marvelous, thank you. Then, the item number eight is the treasurer's reports. Our treasurer is on leave, and so, our very capable village accountant has kindly agreed to stay late after school, uh, and provide us with the updates, so if you would please.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Debbie Vernon, accountant for the village of Lake Barrington. As President Richardson said, our treasurer, Peggy Harris, is out of the country, and she asked me to prepare the treasurer's report that she has prepared. Um, if you look through your financials either online and in your paper packets, the financial statements have been prepared and have been reviewed for the 10 months ending February 28th, 2019, of the village of Lake Barrington's fiscal year 2019. This is the 10th month of our fiscal year, and we are 83% through our fiscal year. If you want to start with the general fund, if you look on page two, that's the flash report, and it shows that the assets are $2,372,000, and the corresponding liabilities are $575,000 plus equity of $1,797,000. So, that, that... So that therefore equals $2,372,000, and that shows that the balance sheet is in balance. Revenues for the 10 months is $2,930,000, and expenses are $2,600,000. This results in a net income of $330,000. This compares to last year's net income of $161,000 for the months ending February. Net income for the month of February by itself is $38,700. This is $20,000 better than the estimated February income that was used for the budget worksheets. The flash report, as you know from prior meetings, this itemizes the one-time planned extraordinary items, which expenses have been covered by reserved fund balance. The section above the bold line shows the total financial numbers, and the section below the line breaks out regular operations and then one-time items. There are no extraordinary activity for this month. The flash report below the bold line shows that in regular operations for the 10 months ending February, there's $356,000 in net income from regular operations compared to 10 months of the fiscal year. Last year, regular operations have $180,000. Sales and use tax, income taxes, and utility taxes are higher than last year at this point. Building permit revenues and interest income are also higher. On the expense side, other consultants and legal expenses is down, while payroll and interior building maintenance is up. The net result is an increase in net income from regular operations of $168,000 this year over last year for the same time period. For the balance sheet, the cash accounts are all in order, and the bank statements have been reconciled and reviewed. If you want to flip forward a few pages to pages number 10 and 11, that will show the actual to budget reports. On page 10, the revenues are at 90% actual to budget, and this is predominantly being pulled up by the impact fee revenue. On page 11, expenses are at 80% actual to budget for the fiscal year. In some cases, this is due merely to timing differences as opposed to a concern for overspending. The purchase of the Featherling property, which was not a budgeted item, is just pulling the budget to actual percentage up as well. But it's important to note that since impact fees were used for that purchase, the real effect to the bottom line is not material. On page 12, the motor fuel tax fund has cash available of $226,000, and normally that fund grows about $10,000 or $11,000 a month from motor fuel tax revenues. No other expenses are anticipated for this fiscal year. Now to the water fund, which is on page 16. It shows that the fund has net current assets of $1,493,000, which is calculated by taking the cash as stated on the balance sheet, plus any current receivables, less any current payables. These funds will be used for future capital expenditures as needed, and we are keeping adequate cash on reserve as the water plant is increasing in its age, and infrastructure capital amounts are very material in dollars. No other planned capital expenditures are remaining for this fiscal year. Page 19 shows the water sewer, the actual to budget numbers, and the total revenue is close to the budgeted amount, and expenses are running slightly below budget. The last fund is on page 21, which is the open space fund. She writes that this operating account is essentially empty. The balance is, in this bank account, it ends in a 6563. That is used to cover the bond principal payments and the payments we make in April and October. So going forward, we're not going to report on this fund because the money has been spent, and it's just a bond note. So it will be two or three pages shorter actually in the report going forward. That adds the financials. The accounts payable warrants have been reviewed and in order for the approval. And I went through there, there was really no unusual or extraordinary expenses. So that's a notch on something. And that's the end of the report. If there was any questions?
Chair is happy to recognize trustees for purposes of questions. And I only have one in action for any cause when you think about it. We're in the committee of the whole. And it goes to the flash report, Debbie. It is widely known in this community that the Lord did not give me the finance gene. So be patient and bear with me on this. Right now, we are 329 and change ahead of where we might have been, right? Is that what that means?
That tells that there's a net income of 329.
Right. That's for the fiscal year's.
Correct.
So if that, at the end of the year, let's just, this is only for purposes of understanding, so it's only an illustration. Let's say it goes up to 430. Just bear with me on this. I just want to make sure I understand. That 440 grand, or whatever it ends up being, would go into the rainy day fund. That's a practical matter. You might manage it in different accounts.
We call it our reserve fund.
Right.
In case, in case we need it.
Now, is that, if that addition included in the six, dropping from the 72% down to the 62%, we're still counting this? The drop includes this amount?
Correct. And if we, I think what you're alluding to is we had a budget workshop meeting right before this, and trustee, we all have the numbers in front of me, but we had, I believe, projected for the fiscal year to end, April 30, 2019, 240-something thousand dollars. So there'll be other, because now, there'll be other expenses for the next month or so. So it kind of, so to answer your question, yes, President Richardson, the numbers is through February, and whatever ends up in April, that then will become our rainy day fund going forward to next fiscal year.
So it's added if it is carried.
Yes. It's accounted for in our FY 2020 budget.
Got it.
Yes.
So then to the reserve. Got it. And then the 2020 budget spends down on that if it is needed or approved.
Right. And then the proposed 2020 budget keeps us at a 62, 63% reserve, and our fiscal policy is at least a 60%.
Right. So we would be in compliance with our fund reserve policy.
No, I appreciate that. Every once in a while, I need a refresh.
How much? We all do.
That's one of the questions I ask.
I appreciate trustee bringing it up in the committee of the whole because it helped me just remember to connect.
Sure. Is that it then?
Any further questions?
Well, I don't want to.
Please.
Today's.
Very mindful of that.
So Debbie, I wish you a day of happiness and the next year filled with joy.
Oh, that's really sweet. Thank you.
Always 29.
Yeah, I wish I was 29.
We love you, Dana.
I think we have a president board that's got a birthday coming up here pretty quick, I think.
Yeah. That sounds familiar.
It was yesterday. I knew there was something.
April Fools, explain so much about that. That's, hey, at least that guy explains. What are the rest of you liars?
I forgot to teach you the speedy needle, too.
Oh, that's right. From your guy.
I remember the speedy needle.
I still have some of those little guns.
That might have changed, right?
Yeah. And the, well, I was asked in a questionary sort through an alumni thing, your hobbies, and I said, holding grudges. And I got all you guys on tape. Thank you, Debbie, very, very much. Agenda item number nine is the administrator's report.
We need a motion to approve the treasures.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. Chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items A to A through C. A, approve the financial statements as of February 28, 2019. B, pay bills in the amount of $160,901.12, as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated April 2, 2019. And A, C, pay bills in the amount of $34,861.89, as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated April 2, 2019. Now, thank you for the reminder. I'd like a motion to approve and block.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Thompson, seconded by trustee Burke. Thank you, gentlemen both. Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Reapie.
Aye.
Trustee Shalor.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Now, agenda item number nine, the administrator's report.
Certainly. The first item I wanted to just make you all aware of, you might have seen it on our website. IDOT has started two drainage projects in the area, one on Route 59, just north of 22 by Signal Hill Road, and the other on Route 22 east of Route 59. There will be a third project. IOD is proposing to replace a storm culvert under Route 22, just east of Stonehenge Golf Course. They forgot to notify us that this project was going to take place, and we will be having a meeting with them at the end of April, and we've invited all the stakeholders, such as Good Shepherd Hospital, the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, the Barrington Fire Department, the Lake County Sheriff's Department, because this project is planning to close Route 22 for a period of time. So we will learn more about that at the end of April and find out how they can accommodate the hospital and deter traffic for the time that they're proposing. So a big thank you to our engineering friends over at North Barrington who made us aware of this project. So.
Not going to close 59 totally, which is on the one lane?
Yeah. It's periodic, you know, if you have to wave.
Yeah, right. I learned of that.
Yeah. The second item I wanted to talk about, and we've just pretty much gone through it, is the budget presentation. We've talked a lot about this in committee of the whole meeting, and because of our village's, I think, great fiscal policies and conservatism and our reserves and our service delivery structure, basically, we have ways where we highly underline contract services that were in pretty good shape. We have some large projects planned for this year. One named Anderson Road, which we just approved the construction of, reconstruction of. We'll be having about $330,000 worth of projects in our Pepper Road area for water and sewer type of projects. And those are some of the big ones. That's also going to include a skater system up in the water and sewer area. And Featherling Park with our Osley brand. We hope to start work on that this year after, or if and when the state of Illinois ever submits a project agreement for our review and approval. We're, we keep asking them about that, and we're giving the paperwork soon. So anyway, we are going to be proceeding based on tonight's committee of the whole meeting with preparing the final budget with the numbers we presented, and that will be presented at the May 7 meeting for approval. So that's the budget. A couple other items of note. I attended the park district meeting in March, and we discussed some potential collaboration projects for Old Barrington Road, healthy hedges plantings. And also, we discussed sharing a water softener at Village Hall to service both Splash Park and Village Hall. We're still looking at some of those ins and outs of that and how that could be worked out. And we met with, Erica and I met with the plumbing inspector today just to find out if there's any issues with that at all. And also, we'll be meeting with them in the near future about potential events at Fire Farm. So I'm sure trustee Thompson will have more on that later. And I'd like to just extend a thank you to Cuban Township Road District for some extra work they did for us this month at no extra charge. They completed the stump grinding and buckhorn cleanup along Old Barrington Road. They installed a dead end sign at Bridgewater because we were getting traffic that was going through and realizing it was a dead end. It's right at the intersection with Kelsey and River at the signal there. And they also did some cleaning up of garbage along Old Barrington Road and also along Harbor Road near Upper Side Drives, and they swept our Village Hall parking lot. So that was all nice stuff. Also, I will be on vacation, April 12, so got fishing sign on my door. And that's it.
We have a policy that lets people go on vacation.
No, no.
How'd they stop that?
I really sit.
I thought we passed that ordinance.
One of those short meetings that I can just, often it's bill. Thank you. Are there questions for the administrator? All right, agenda item number ten is the question board.
Regarding business license, like Ms. Scott described earlier, in streamlining the business license and process, we changed the application forms a bit this year, as well as the liquor license and restaurant licenses, and offered online payments, we think are more convenient for businesses, and they seem to make more sense to businesses. I think we've made the changes to the applications. And looking forward, I'm really looking forward to streamlining the business process even more and creating a database like Ms. Scott talked about, which will give me more time to do other things, like assisting businesses in any way I can, and being more creative with newsletters and other projects that her administrator asked for me. And without doing all that time-consuming data entry and paperwork that we've been doing. So thank you to Ms. Scott for helping us with this process. And then for the newsletter, there will be a newsletter coming out early summer, so I'll be looking for any submission by the first week in May for that, and I'll be sending out a reminder to everyone about that.
Questions for the clerk? Thank you, Lisa. And we can move to the reports of the standing committees, up combined, 11A and 11D. This was a little bit of, I met recently with a group of Canadian mayors and American mayors interested in water issues. Most of them are from communities that border the Great Lakes or the Saint Martin Seaway. But it was, it was an interesting dialogue. Some of the, there's a Great Lakes-Saint Martin Cities Initiative that's become a pretty good resource. The executive director is the former mayor of Wisconsin. We had quite a good conversation about groundwater protection, water source protection, and I see the Citizens for Conservation hand out in the back about problem making some clean space efforts publicly over privately. Those things are important. I enjoy, you know, it's kind of fun. I was in the UK last weekend with two mayors over there, kind of as assigned to what I was doing otherwise. And it's kind of, it's kind of reassuring that we all have the same challenges, and we all have the same things that get after us. And British politics and American politics right now seem to share current similar dynamics. So always glad to come home to America, but always glad to visit our neighbors to the north and our cousins, of course, to the home. Karen had mentioned the IDOT thing, and I just asked her to engage fidelity consulting in those conversations, not for an active role necessarily in front, but in the event that further advocacy assistance is required. Those are my reports. I can move to B, Community Relations, Special Events, and that is embarrassing. Trustee Thompson, you stole the show tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, thank you for the honor of presenting a proclamation to President Tom Gilder. I only have one other item, and I'm working with the park district and village administrator Karen Dalton-Lane on summer fall events at Fire Farm, and we have a meeting scheduled April 11 to move forward. Expect to have some specifics at the May village board meeting. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Another star on tonight's program, trustee Burke with Economic Development.
Well, you're tired of hearing from me, but I'm going to kind of stay on a little roll and repeat for the sake of everybody out there. Just a couple of highlights on economic development. One is Karen Dalton-Lane and I met with Tan. One is Karen Dalton Lane and I met with Tammy Curran, General Manager, and Mark Faber, the COO of Cannon Sports, I guess, last week or the week before, as really just part of an outreach, which is what we've been talking about. And as you know, we have a great relationship with them, that they've been really good about outreach, back and forth, but part of it was just to get an update on what was going on and also discuss some of the things that were going on with the District 220 piece and what we've been discussing, you know, in terms of whether there was any direct threat to their programs if this public school system started to sponsor similar type programs. So, we went in there, told them everything that we'd been done, and they were extremely appreciative, as you all are aware, of our efforts to what? To recognize that we're trying to preserve and protect a business that's in our village, right? And that we're from external threats or other threats, and not to say that the school system was a threat, but until we can understand it could be perceived as a threat. But it was great, because they showed us around, showed us some of the new things that were going on, some of the successes that they're having, things that I didn't know. They have a project after school, like heat program, which has like 50 or 60 kids in it, which is great, so the school system busts them right there. The kids have sports programs and study programs and reading, and then their parents come pick them up there. So, as Karen and I both said, man, if we have a program like that here, if we just walk over there ourselves in the house, God knows what else. But they're doing some really cool things over there. The place is doing really well. Like every business, they have up and down challenges. It's like they're stuck, you know, like they'll be a really good upswing, and then they'll lose a big league, and then they'll have to go find another league, but, you know, they're doing well. Little surprises and nuggets come out of that, which is positive, and there are some things, some very specific things that they asked us to engage in supporting and helping them, and Karen did a great job of following. So, and they said, you guys are great partners. I mean, I just can't say that enough. That speaks to everybody in this whole village, is they view us as wildly good partners. They're thrilled to be here. They're expanding their footprint in Chicago area. They continue to build and buy ice rinks around this place, so they view Chicago as a huge hub of expansion for them, and they're very pleased with what's going on. When we were over there, they had a pickleball setup and two gyms. I mean, they had like 15 courts set up, and they got people waiting. They got a league of pickleball over there, and that's like insane. And who knew that this stuff was going off in there? And it's, a lot of Lake Barrington shores being licensed, we're part of that, right? So, great meeting, those are the things that we're trying to do more, right? That's where we want to build the time to do more of the outreach and understand how we can support our businesses. We alluded to it in the meeting, but again, we want to acknowledge that we do have a business moving into the area in the foreign passways side. All American Reclaim, in a nutshell, on their website, they advertise themselves as the Midwest largest seller of reclaimed martenwood. They find wood in interesting places like rail car floors and all kinds of stuff, so, and they also retail on custom furniture, and so we're going to be excited to be welcoming them. And I think the owners are Auntie and Patty, that's my catalyst, my catalyst, my catalyst.
Something like that.
Yeah. So, people will have it here, will get to know them and learn more about their business when they're ready to come talk. We also have a closing. Forest Press is announcing that they are closing, which we're sad to hear, but these folks are effectively closing business, retiring. And I think all of you were copying Karen, very nice letter to them, you know, thanking them for their service and their service to us specifically and to our broader community. And these are the touches, these are the things that we were trying to do, you know, this is all of these things. So, even in closing, we want to thank you all. And as we said, that's on a pretty, pretty top of the stretch of Route 14, and, you know, we'll see as that, you know, turns into, you know, every one of those things turns into opportunity. So, our goal is to figure out how to turn that into opportunity. And that's my report.
Thank you. I really appreciate the effort here, because we're going to face a potential headwind in the future in the state, and it's great to know we're battening down the hatches early. 11F, Open Spaces in Village Facilities, Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, excuse me. No?
No.
Oh, I skipped.
Well, I checked it off.
You had enough of what I was saying.
There's only so much, that's my mistake, you know, there's only so much I can say. These messages, easy to listen to. I can always try administration. Trustee Redby, thank you, I'm sorry for the error.
I would gladly relinquish my time.
I will yield my unnecessary time to the distinction.
Well, I only have two items. Next week, Debbie and I are going to sit down and discuss, and she's already begun to put together what we'll call the Extended Plankage Budget that goes beyond 2021, and this will allow us to begin to figure out how we're going to do all these capital expenditures for the long term, and why programs need to come out, why programs need to go in as we, as our village evolves. And so, I'm looking forward to doing that. We are now, New Leno, we're executing 19, we're planning 20, and we're extended planning 21 through 24, so, whoa. Okay, the next item is that Lori Lightfoot has won the Mayor of Chicago 74% of the vote. Two hundred eighty-eight thousand to a hundred thousand. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
How about the local election?
I think nobody wants that. It's a closed race.
Let's see, I, this does say that very early returns are the fraction of the polls counted. The bottom referendum, 1606, four, 1679, it says, fraction of the polls counted.
Oh, great.
Wow. Is Burke still in in the trustee race?
No, I forgot to vote for myself. I voted for three. And my wife, I'm sure, didn't vote for one, so I'll probably wait down. She voted twice for these guys.
Okay, I apologize now upon heaven, thank you Karen for keeping me straight on this. Open Spaces in Village Facilities, Trustee Mitchell?
Pardon? Just kidding.
I'm honestly, so I've moved to all cities. Okay, a couple of things. As we all saw for the budget and everything else, we are moving forward on some facility issues, and glad to say, just a time for AC and everything, we will have our final furnace AC systems replaced, and that's a big, that's a big thing to take on, so that's, that's big. How old were the ones again that we were replacing? Originals?
Wow. Ninety-three, ninety-two.
And had not, they didn't know us anything. So, that's good. Quite a while back, trustee, trustee, Village Manager Dalton Lane and I visited shopping for furniture. The company Enrolling Meadows, Arthur J. Gallagher Company, has offered us chairs and tables that we might be able to use in our community room. And so, those chairs are originals as well in there, and these chairs are newer and will be easier to stack and take care of, so we will be working on replacing the chairs in the community room and adding a table or two maybe to an office.
Couple tables, and it's, you forgot to say they're all free.
Oh, that was what I was just coming to.
How magic words, free is good.
Free is, free is good, and these were used by Gallagher, the company my wife owns for, for a short period of time, and their previous building, they moved to the new building and then put all of this into storage, so you aren't the lucky recipient. I know somebody, so that's, that's very, very exciting. And just sort of, I guess, not really open space, but yes. More than personal privilege, I have the Baytown Legislative Agenda that I would like to pass around to everybody. And thank you for your continued. We've got it covered, one way or the other, one of us will, will cover it. And just another point, that if anyone is interested in heading to Springfield, April through last day, May 1st, right in there, that Tuesday, Wednesday, and meeting with legislators, the trip's being set up, the only challenge might be getting a hotel room, but if anybody is interested, please let me know, or reach out to Chairman Agnelli directly, and that would be wonderful. I'm unable to attend that session. You know, I haven't been in about three years, but those are, they're very instructive because you gain a sense of how these decisions that affect us are made and how they can be influenced effectively. I, we were laughing, I was telling you about these mayors from other countries, what we decided is that every member of parliament, every member of Congress, every governor, every state legislator, every provincial parliament member, they all want to be city council people and then mayors, because they spend all their time micromanaging us. And if you look at some of the stuff in here, it's all about saying to the state, you know, thank you, we are quite capable of managing our own affairs. And especially, I think what's amazing, we have a new staff person, administrative person who has some criminal skills at Baytown, and she and Janet Agnelli have put together, so far in my time there, the most effective shooting in sort of, still here, a combo spreadsheet database that we're working on that's tracking all its bill tracker, everything that comes up through municipal, any of the groups, and then they're tracking as well, and we go through them line by line and look at, is this something Baytown needs to back up, or is it something Baytown, Baytown needs to oppose? And it's a, that process is very informative, so any of those things that rise to the top, for example, I think one has just been shared there on cannabis or something like that, some of these things that pop up, it gives us opportunity, and what I have learned, which I'm sure our president knows very well, is when you see one of these odd bills, you have to find out where it came from, who wrote it, and why it's up there, before you decide what to do about it. And sometimes, there, it goes as low as a personal vendetta, sometimes it goes, you know, when you're trying to consolidate units of government or something like that, and other times it goes to revenue. And one of the interesting things that won't directly impact us, but maybe some of our businesses, is the, a local ability to track revenue on online sales back to where they delivered, not from where they came from. So, you order, and it comes here, Lake Barrington should get the share of that revenue, for example. So, they're, these things are sort of in the works, but they are potentially helpful as we lose a lot of other brick and mortar stores and things move like that. So, that's more than I want to say, take you more time, but there was a lot going on, and trying to stay on topic. You know, I appreciate it, and you have dedicated an awful lot of time to representing this, and I'm very grateful. Glad to do it, very honored.
One of the, one of the bills that I just saw today, that's being presented by our local representative, I believe, about reducing units of government, one of which was Lake and McHenry County eliminating townships that have 15 miles of road or less. Would that impact us?
It will start right now, that targeted, is in one of those categories I mentioned, it targets McHenry County.
No, it's at Lake and McHenry.
And the lake portion right now should not be a problem for us.
I think the statute is 25 miles.
Yes.
About the state. In other words, Palatine Township, for example, doesn't have a road department, they have their road work done by Barrington under a similar statute, but the, but the road limit is higher, higher. Do we know how many road miles Cuban Township is in the road?
I did want to discuss that, and I can get that, we were here, you can pull it up.
Specific, you were talking about 15, I didn't know what, that we should ever look at or is up for.
And that's an example of something that, careful here, originated to handle a very specific problem, which you were aware of, was going on in McHenry County, the Road District and the County Board and the whole. So, just, oh, crazy, so that's, but that's the sort of thing that has come up?
I think Algonquin Township is.
Algonquin, yeah.
The target. Where there's been litigation, intense litigation for two or three years already.
And there's all sorts of things floating around, not being able to reimburse village employees or town or city employees if they go on training or go to meetings, and that arose out of some bad press for some villages that really, some people who really took advantage of reimbursement, trips and dinners, and so, it starts out innocuous enough.
And this.
And then you realize the impact of some of these things.
That's right.
And it triples down when you look at what's going on. For example, Baytown would certainly support, everybody should be home enrolled, but not everybody is home. So, anything that attempts to keep any village, city or town, whatever, from changing their status, it tries to get sort of slid under, and that's unfortunately weird.
There's legislation right now to preempt local zoning control relative to temporary agricultural shelters, which are common in the, in the countryside of Colorado.
Hoes. They were called shoes.
Yeah.
So, I could entertain you for hours, if you'd like me to, with some of the absurdity. You know, it's true, because you can't make it up.
Yeah.
But thank you. And if anybody has questions on specific things, send me an email, call me, or whatever, and I'll get you the latest status of where it is. And Janet, from one of her emails to you and me and the other, the other Baytown, said that villages ought to think about their position on recreational cannabis. I'll invite everybody to think about it over the next month, and we'll discuss it in Committee of the Whole. This is a pretty easy conversation for me, but others may have different viewpoints, and I look forward to exchanging those.
And of course, that is one of those temporary agricultural shelters, which are then.
That's right. They're forming a political action committee.
I attended a marijuana summit at Harper College with law enforcement people and village managers, and the state representatives there said that they, the bill will allow every person to have 10 plants, 10 plants of their own, which, as I understand, don't have a personal mileage. That's a lot, that's a lot of marijuana.
Yes. And I envision, one of our neighborhoods, that an empty house was being used, or, so, do you remember that?
Yeah.
It's like, well, there's 10 residents that live in this house, so we each have 10 plants. So, there are issues for us to be aware of, particularly what frustrates me, and this is when Kevin will say I start to sound like I'm chingering or something, is.
Springs Eternal.
The pushdown of things to take away our power and funnel our money somewhere else and leave us sitting here. So, I should stop. Thank you. Well, we, I, this is something that should be put out, so we ought to all begin to that. 11G is public safety, engaged communities, a nice report to follow a discussion about legalized marijuana's public safety.
First of all, Deputy Stankowitz is here tonight, and I just want to make a point of what has been happening with law enforcement personnel in the last couple of months. People like Deputy Stank, Deputy Stankowitz put their lives on the, every day, and how many of your fellow officers, for no reason other than negligence or situations, have given up their lives to perform what you do every day? And I just think we owe a debt of gratitude to those that do what you do. The entire department, and our sympathy goes to the families of those who have recently lived. those who have recently, and there's been an awful lot of them, especially in Illinois, that have succumbed for no real good reason. So again, thank you. I know you said you didn't have much to talk about tonight. We're in gratitude for the service that you and your department provides. And we're glad that Deputy Reeves now has a big explorer instead of his charger, so that he can go patrol our areas while he still is on the force.
He was a boat I chartered. He didn't want that boat, but I told him, the truck is so much better.
Oh, yeah. I always have a tough time getting into the charger anymore. I try to meet periodically with, as I told them, I had to meet with, with the officers and Chris Comson and Jen Chipp, yourself. So again, I appreciate what you do for us, day in and day out.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
As far as the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, almost three years ago, the department purchased a parcel of land on Dundee Road in unincorporated Barrington to be the site of their third fire station, culmination of a multi-year effort to identify an ideal location for a new fire station that will allow them to provide more effective fire and emergency medical service to the residents and businesses throughout their 48 square mile jurisdiction. Don't know if you would have heard, but last week, the Cook County Board rejected their plan to build the third fire station. They claim it was an overreaction of utterly false information created and disseminated by a small group of individuals. They said it would have greatly improved their ability to deliver the service. While they're disappointed, they respect the process by which it was reached, and now refocus their efforts and identify every possible option for achieving those objectives. So there are two stations in the district. Obviously, the main station is down here in Pepper Park. I try to make their monthly meetings on the third Thursday of the month. And as Administrator Dalton Lane is at communication with Fire Chief Cryer, who's got a great department I think, and they're, they're a good partner for us. Matter of fact, I'm trying to obtain for them a miniature fire truck collection that I found a resident of Lake Barrington Shores as, has moved to Lake Barrington Woods. And it's got this, I've never seen such a large miniature fire truck collection. So I'm trying to get this guy to contribute it to the Barrington Countryside. And Chief Cryer, he'll put on a nice exhibit and give the guy all that sort of kind of work that out. So it's a great department. We're fortunate with both Barrington Countryside as well as Wakanda take care of us. And then they have the provisions that they do to provide the service that we need. Fire trucks are almost important. The Barrington Countryside is going out for a bid for a new one. Their home come cheap, a couple hundred thousand dollars. But they did get three old school buses without engines, so that they can use them for training. So if you see some old school buses, you'll know what they're using them for.
No, my client is the one who gave it to Durham School Service.
Yes, right. National Express.
And they've done it for other departments in Lake County.
Yeah. So it's, it's kind of, kind of neat. They do an awful lot of training. So you don't realize sometimes what these individuals on the departments do as far as ongoing training. But they're using the school bus to do execution and various other things. And then school bus, they have a few mugs in their reserves of still current pensions. Wakanda's the same way. They, matter of fact, even have their firefighters redoing their conference rooms. They have their firefighters who work for them to upgrade things. As Dadek is retiring, oh, had Dadek passed away, retired, and unfortunately, he passed away just recently. Mark Durker is also retiring, and they're having a great big event, a 30th meeting, which is the third Thursday of the month of the Wakanda Department. I'll be happy to know that they have 391 ambulance calls to date this year. Guess where most of them are?
LBS.
LBS. As far as LBS, not much going on. The Veterans Good Organization, you saw them here tonight. Happy to see the people from LBS show up. You only have Tallgrass, as I mentioned last month. They're really wheeling and dealing. They've got some prices, and their models are trying to be very proactive in selling those this, this spring. They've got some good results, but if you have an opportunity, they've got a ranch model that's, that's complete. They have another model that's coming out. They're trying to be aggressive to sell the property, which obviously helps us go along. So if you haven't, Captain Schwann is over there, should be happy to show you. If you know him, but he wants to boot the area, it's a good place to be. And the young club is the young club, and that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions for Johnson? 11H is roads and infrastructure. Trustee Perkins.
Thank you.
Glad to see you up there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The only thing I have is that the Anderson Road Resourcing Project is expected to be complete July 1st. That's all.
Anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
No old business. We can move to 13A, consideration of inordinance to amend appropriation ordinance number 2018-0-09 for 2018, 2019. Who's setting this one up? So Debbie or you, or Janet?
It's supposed to be me, but I lost my paper. Here I go.
That is forced.
I know. It's like, I haven't done it. So this is pretty straightforward. A year ago in May, we, the board adopted its annual appropriation ordinance for this current fiscal year. And at that time, there was no plan to purchase the federal property. So accordingly, when it was decided to purchase the federal property, the funds just weren't appropriated. So the amended appropriation ordinance will transfer the previously appropriated funds from the general fund to the open space fund to cover the spending necessary from the open space fund for all the funds we're out of to purchase the federal property. So it's really like a big accounting exercise. I'm describing it correctly, Debbie. So there's no increase being requested for the total appropriations for the fiscal year. It's just to make everything match up, and our auditors will be really happy.
To have a legal appropriation to support the expenditures that have occurred for the federal.
Yes. So it's just a motion we need to approve the amended appropriation ordinance.
Other questions for the administrator? We did discuss this in committee of the whole, but I, for the benefit of the public, I'm happy to entertain a few questions now. If not the chair would like a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-0-02 and ordinance amending appropriation ordinance number 2018-0-09 for 2018, 2019. Do you have that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Burke, seconded by Mitchell. Thank you. Both gentlemen, Kirk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes. No resolutions, no new business. June 16, second opportunity for the public to address the court. No one seeks recognition, no co session. Chair would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.